Well, good evening. Tonight it is Wednesday, November 10th, 2021, and the time is 6:30 PM. This is a regular scheduled meeting of District 191 Burnsville Egan Savage School District. And welcome, everybody here in attendance and those watching from home. Director Alt, would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin tonight with approval of tonight's agenda. I will ask for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester and second?
Second.
By Director Said. All those in favor to approve tonight's agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And if not, here any, the motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to the information section of our meeting for tonight. We'll begin with receiving a report about Read for the Record. Coming to the microphone Cynthia Samper's, early learning coordinator. Welcome.
Thank you. So, good evening, Dr. Battle, Chair Miller, and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for the invitation and the opportunity to come and share how community education is enriching the lives of young children in our community. The number of children enrolled in our Birth to Five program is nearly 500 children at this time. We are really proud to have one of the largest voluntary pre-kindergarten programs in the state of Minnesota. Our core beliefs in early childhood are synonymous with 191. Social, emotional, literacy, math, all done in the experience of play. So using play, we are able to promote the healthy development of the whole child by teaching math skills at the snack table, in the block corner, with cooking activities, and more. But tonight, it's my pleasure to share with you Read for the Record 2021. The Read for the Record goal, as indicated on this slide, is to raise awareness around critical areas of early literacy and provide access to high-quality books and reading materials. It's really a day of celebration. So this year's selection is Amy Wu and the Patchwork Dragon. And for more than 25 years, Jump Start has been fueled by the core belief that providing high-quality educational opportunities to all young children contributes to breaking the cycle of poverty. Jump Start provides an early education solution that meets the needs of the children and communities we serve while advocating for change that ensures all children have access to the early learning opportunities they need. Jump Start focuses on oral language with specific attention to social, emotional skills. So it really goes over well in our district since those are our goals as well. Since June of 2012, ISD 191 has been participating in Read for the Record. And this year, on October 28th, nearly 800 students in our district read or were read to Amy Wu and the Patchwork Dragon. These under 800 children attend voluntary pre-kindergarten in one of our elementary schools or here at Diamond Head Based Learning, preschool, ECFE, Ready to Grow, Ready to Learn. And additionally, all grade levels at Vista View Elementary, thanks to their principal, Jeff Neppson, they were also read to. Two factors have kind of influenced this year's numbers, COVID, of course, plus the supply chain and distribution challenges we're experiencing. This year, the books arrived in my office 24 hours ahead of this experience. So, as we say in our office, we continue to learn. In addition to the text of the book, Jump Start offers creative ways for teachers and parents to make the story come alive for children. Some of the art suggestions captured in the photos tonight are an example of what's suggested in the book. If you get an opportunity to look at the book, it's not your typical edition when you get a book from Jump Start. In the beginning, they talk about the vocabulary that's there, they give art suggestions for a teacher to be able to use in their classroom and how you can make the learning go deeper each time you read it. I'll go back to that one. So this year's plan continued to include COVID mitigation strategies. In this slide, you can see that Kyle Henrickson, he's our facilities manager, he's a guest speaker in one of our preschool classrooms. So instead of the ability to invite people from outside of our district in, we used our internal resources. This group of children is part of our family learning program. We're adults, usually parents, are enrolled in an adult English program, and children attend preschool at the same time. So one day per week, we come together for an experience of family literacy, learning, and play. Jump Start offered Amy Wu and the Patchwork Dragon in English and in Spanish. Here at Kneel, we have a number of Spanish-speaking students. And the book is then read in Spanish by Jessica Meyer, who's a member of our tech team. She's not part of the instructional team in that classroom, so she was a guest there. The pandemic gave us educators new opportunities for learning, too. Here's one of our community liaisons, and she read and recorded the book in Spanish and then distributed it to all of our classrooms so it could be read in Spanish in every single classroom. Additionally, Mary Kay Ashley, who's one of our parent educators in ECFE, she read the book in English and in Spanish through a virtual Storytime. Parents pick up the link and log into a virtual Storytime. Children here are pictured from Diamond Head and the three- to five-year-old program. And then on the right with the Wonder Dragon is at Hidden Valley. Again, this is a group of kids. These are kids also at Hidden Valley, and they moved it into a group learning experience. So oftentimes, they have to talk about what's our plan as a group, and then they have to work on making it happen. So it's not just literacy, it's we're learning group negotiations and cooperation and what are you going to do and what am I going to do? So that's a good example of how that worked in that classroom. And since this book's first reading in our schools a couple of weeks ago, teachers have deepened this literacy experience with extended vocabulary and group projects. This book has been read in our outdoor classroom at Gideon Pond. Strategies such as repeated read aloud that we've learned from Minnesota Reading Corps are then also used in the classroom. And that's a way that we can really make sure that vocabulary is not just a word that we gloss over, but there's actually some meaning. Frequently, kids can tell you what the meaning is behind a word based on the fact that we repeat it more than one time. Yes, that's it. We're really grateful for this, all the community support that we receive from you as our board, our superintendent, and I really thank you for this opportunity to come and share one of our activities we do in early learning. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll open up for comments or questions, Board members. Go ahead, Director Alt.
Thank you, Cynthia. This is always such a great presentation, and I just so appreciate that the team was creative and was able to allow this to happen again this year because I know it's such an enriching experience. And just my plug, hopefully in the future, post-COVID, we'll be able to have our preschool kids come join us and have the book read to us as we have in the past. I know it's not possible tonight, so.
Right.
Thank you.
We look forward to that opportunity. And maybe one without masks as well.
Exactly, yeah.
Anyone else?
Can I just see some of the inside pages of the book?
Sure. You can pass them around.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just thank you.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Ms. Samper's. I appreciate the time, your time tonight, and all the work you're putting into this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we will move to receive a report about fall enrollment. Speaking will be Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. Welcome, Ms. Ryder.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair Miller, Board Directors, and Dr. Battle. Tonight is a November meeting, and we typically at this time of year will talk to you about our fall, October numbers. And as we talk through this information, we will be providing you with our current reality for the population of students for this fall, the composition of those students. We're going to take a look back to the past data and prior, and then the fall, October 1 enrollment trend data. So as we go ahead and look at this first slide, I just want to comment on the fact that these are total students. This is a fall count, so fall count means it's a head count, okay? It's not like a student is partially counted in any way because of the number of days they might attend or the number of minutes in a day they might attend. These are just all head counts. So as you see, we have early education, and that includes our voluntary pre-kindergarten program, our early childhood special education program, and our school readiness program in those numbers. Our elementary and secondary, you see listed there, and we now also have our Virtual Academy, which is just like any other site, and so they are also included in all those numbers. So as we take a look then at this slide, this is regarding our enrollment by grade. And so you can see that information listed with a count at the top of each bar that tells you how many students are in our fall count. This is not including the early childhood students we just spoke of in the voluntary pre-K program, school readiness, or ECSE, Early Childhood Special Ed. This is just K-12, and so we have 7,413 listed. The colored bars are, elementary is the black-colored bars, grades K through 5, and then our middle school in the gold, and the gray is the secondary grade levels of 9 through 12. Our best and our BOSS programs are all included in those high school numbers as well. So now we want to take a look about, take a look at the composition of all these numbers. So this page just breaks it down for you. Most of this information is in the categories in which MDE has been asking for. We know that that information is also going to be shifting a bit as we move to edFi, and they have different categories that we need to complete. But you can see the count of students for this current year's fall count and the percentage of the makeup of those students in the whole. The next slide takes a look at this information also for fall count, and this time, it takes a look at it by the school site. And within that school site, every bar is 100%. So of those, that 100% of students in that grade, in that school, excuse me, what is the makeup or composition of that ethnicity within that building? So you can see that with the different colors. It is a little tricky from afar to tell the difference in some of those colors, but that information is available. If you get a little closer, you can see those different colors then. I would say that I would point out the Virtual Academy Elementary is in there, is a separate site, as is the Virtual Academy Middle School and the Virtual Academy High School. All of these numbers are preliminary fall count numbers because we have until December to complete our data with the state of Minnesota. At this point in time, we believe our data is complete, but should another school district, for example, have an error on one of their lines, and it has to do with a student that might be spending some time with us, we need to work that out, and that could possibly change our data a little bit. But by December 31st, everyone gets their information in for that fall count. Next is a slide that takes a look at our student population for the fall and looks at it from a special education perspective. So it is broken down by the buildings, again, at the bottom, very similar to the slide we just looked at as far as which ones are identified. But I also want to point out the horizontal lines that you see colored differently across the graph. So there is a gold bar that goes across, which is the district average, right around 16%. Our elementary average is shown with a gray bar across those black lines, which are the elementary schools, and that is at 17%. And our secondary average is showing with a 16% with a black bar over the secondary schools, okay? Next, we have the same information now talking about our English learners and taking a look at these broken down by the various different sites, including the Virtual Academy sites. And you see again those bars. I'll point out that the gold is district-wide average at 21%. Our elementary is the gray that's over the top of the gray, excuse me, black bars. And that elementary average is 27%. And then our secondary average is 16% across the secondary schools. Next, we have our current and free reduced meals eligible students, and we have this broken also down by the same various school locations, with the average for district-wide being 46%. Our elementary average is around 50%, and our secondary average is at 42%. Again, these are our K-12 students at fall count. Now, we're going to take a look at the past data. So this is information that is a summary of our residents and our non-residents, and whether we're serving them or are they served elsewhere. This is really difficult data to try and gather throughout the school year that you're in, in a current, you know, real time. You instead want to take a look at this information as a look back. So we're looking back at the years that come up to the 2020-2021 school year. And you can see, we did provide this information over the number of years, so you could see the trends that may be occurring here. And it does have a, starts out with our resident totals, and then it talks about the residents who are attending, and then it talks about the residents who may be attending elsewhere. For those that are attending elsewhere, the question is, well, where are they? So then it shows you the residents attending elsewhere through open enrollment. And then you see some of the open enrollments coming into our district who are not residents of ours. It does give you an indication of the difference between those two numbers, and that's what we often talk about as being our in-or-out numbers. And then our tuitioned-out numbers are separately stated because that's typically an agreement that we have for students to be served in another location other than ISD 191's services. And the bottom line is our residents that might be attending charter schools. This same type of information is then taken a look at in a graphic form for just the past year of 2020-2021 school year. It does include our pre-K grades through 12. And as you can see here, the non-resident students that are attending our school district, you see in the smaller circle on the left. The box to the right is intended to be all of our residents. So as you take a look at it, you can see how many of our residents are attending ISD 191. That's the gold. Then as you take a look, there's a red section. These are residents attending elsewhere. There is a sliver for the tuitioned-out students, and that's gray, I believe. And then there's a blue pie shape that is for the charter school students that are our residents but being served by charters. As you take a look at the next slide, it takes the students that are being served at other public schools and breaks down that number by those various different schools. And I would say that there is one that states miscellaneous others. You can see that when we get below the number 20, we don't keep track of them separately, and so they're grouped together in that miscellaneous. Again, all of these last three slides have been for the 2020-2021 school year as a look This is still the case in this next slide also for summary of residents attending elsewhere. So we saw the pie chart, now you can kind of see the numbers. And so you can take a look at those, including the charter schools broken down by the names of those that we are able to give you that are, again, above a certain number. We used, I believe, 20 for that, too. A summary of the residents attending the non-public schools breaks it down then also so you can see over the years and at which school they were attending. This information, again, is all a look back. As we move into this next section, we're going to be talking about our, what's the trends looking like for this fall data? So we're going to start out with talking about our early education students, and just a reminder of exactly which programs we have and where they, where they're funded. So the first one we want to talk about is early childhood special education, which is funded primarily by state and federal dollars, and we keep track of all those expenditures and revenues in the general fund. The next section is our voluntary pre-kindergarten program. This is a program that is funded by state monies, okay? They are identified specifically for voluntary pre-kindergarten, but it's treated just like the other ADMs that we may have in our students and schools and funded in that manner. And that is also tracked for revenue and expenditures in our general fund. Lastly is our school readiness. This is funded by tuition and state pathway scholarships. That program is run strictly through community education for our tracking of revenues and This same group of students then, as we take a look at a three-year comparison for fall seat count, head count, you can see from fall of 2019 being the 1920 school year, and that's the gold bars across the three programs. And you have a light gray that is for the 2020-2021 fall numbers. And the black is our 21-2022 fall counts for those various different programs. I would point out that in this, this past year, for example, VPK, you can see kind of stayed up there a ways compared to our school readiness having dropped. That is largely due to the fact that we had open seats in free PK with the attendance that we had last year due to some students being virtual or possibly not enrolling. So therefore, we utilized the VPK program more than we did the school readiness. Moving on, we are now moving into the elementary area and talking about a two-year comparison of our October seat count. So we are comparing fall of the school year for 2020-2021 and the fall of '21 for the school year '21-'22, grades K through 5 only. 2021 fiscal year is in the black column on the left side of each school site, and it is in the gold on the right side. You will note here that we do not list the Virtual Academy students on this one as a site because they didn't have a comparative number for 2021 school year. Next, we go to our secondary schools, and we are showing the same two-year comparison for fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22. Similarly, for Virtual Academy, they are not included in these numbers as they are, there's not an equivalent for those sites. All right. So then we look at our historical enrollment. This is everyone, okay? I'm sorry, this is everyone K-12, thank you. That's the enrollment for a five-year trend. So it does not include our early learners, but it does include our Virtual Academy numbers because in 2022, they're included. And in the previous years, those that were enrolled with us would have been at another site, okay? And as we take a look at this same information, and now we want to break down the ethnicity for that five-year trend, this is again K-12 counts that you can see. You can see it visually with the colors, and then below that, you can see the numbers in a chart format so that you can easily understand those figures as well and get a sense for that, the comparisons. I find it interesting to look at the 2018 year and the 2022 year. And then our next slide is talking about special education enrollment trend over the five years. So our special education is shown in the gold, excuse me, with the black below it, our non-special education students. You can see the counts below for our total count of students that are being served through a special education program with percentages and the years below that. Similarly, we have our English learners and the enrollment trend over the five years here as well, gold being those students that are eligible for service and those students that are not would be identified in the black columns, with the numbers and percentages and the years stated below. And then we have our free reduced meals enrollment trend. This one is, you can tell with this, looking at the numbers, you're going to see the impact of the pandemic on our total free reduced eligibility counts simply due to the volume of applications that may have been completed. But you will see the account, the percent, and the year below. And that concludes our enrollment report for the fall 2021 year.
Thank you. I will open it up for comments or questions from Board members.
I had one. More of an observation, I think, than a question, but I was at the grade level enrollment slide. I think it was slide four or five.
Can we go back up there?
A little bit of a watch out for the future perhaps in that this year's senior class is, that one, that's the one. Just noticing the number disappeared between this year's senior class and next year's senior class, that's 136 student difference. So that's a concern I would have when we start thinking about next year's budget perhaps.
Yes. I failed to mention the fact that when we talk about our grade 12, particularly at the fall count, you will notice that the numbers are typically higher on the 12th grade numbers than what you would maybe see in the spring because we oftentimes have students who are completing credits in that first semester, and so they're in our count even though they may not necessarily spend the entire year with us. So there is that also, which does kind of account for some of that difference between the 11th and 12th grade, but I still agree with you, there is a difference.
Still, even with that, I'm sure it's a pretty significant
Yes.
difference, which is unfortunate at a time when we're, we've been talking for a long time about declining enrollment in the district.
Yes.
Let's pay it on that. Does that include like students that are fifth year or sixth year, too? Okay.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Director Alt.
Actually, Scott, you had exactly the slide that I, that I was thinking about, too, that, you know, both in terms of enrollment and in terms of anticipated facilities usage over the next 10 years, looking at the dip between, you know, the upper over the next 10 years, looking at the dip between, you know, the upperclassmen in the high school. And granted, it's not as quite as much of a dip to kindergarten, but hopefully, we'll be able to retain more of those students at elementary than we have in the past because we know that that's typically where we've been losing our students. But certainly for us to consider in terms of facilities usage and how we can really, you know, use our spaces as much as we can given the number of students that we have in there. And I think also, slide 19, I think it was, Lisa?
This one?
No, it's the one with the composition, the multicolored.
I got it, I think.
It's one of the last ones.
This one?
For everybody, for, keep going. Maybe it was 20, probably 20.
Okay.
Sorry.
This one?
No, keep going.
This one?
This one, yes.
There we go.
Bingo. Sorry.
Sorry.
It's just a wonderful illustration of all of the families and the cultures and the backgrounds that we're serving, and it just reiterates for me our why in terms of this board's commitment to thinking about our work and doing our work with an equity lens because it's such a wonderful mix of families, and we owe it to each of our students and each of our families to serve them to the best of our ability. So I like this slide a lot.
Additional questions, comments?
I just have a very curious question, and there probably isn't an answer for it now, but looking at the summary of residents and non-residents slide.
Can we just find that quick so we're?
This one? Yes. What are the variables that are involved in residents attending elsewhere?
Right, so as you see below, they could be open enrolled to another public school, they could be enrolled in a charter school, they could be in a private school, they could be tuitioned out to another school. So those are typically the four possibilities that we would find identified and counted and analyzed in this data.
It's just that over the years, it seems like that number just grew and grew.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Just a clarifying question. Tuitioned out includes PSEO?
No.
No?
PSEO is counted as our own kids because we pay through that revenue contract, as you recall. So instead, these would be students that we have an acknowledgement form from another district, and for possibly IEP reasons or some other reasons, they are being served in a different location, different school district.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have one clarification with the addition of the Virtual Academy in many of the earlier slides. Are the numbers in aggregate, then? So they're not being double counted, correct?
No.
If they're in the Virtual Academy column, they're not in, say, Hidden Valleys column or whatever.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, and then just question about looking forward on this report. I saw in a number of places we indicate EL. I know that's an indicator with student, or with state standards and such. We've talked a little bit about migrating to a different way of looking at that. What's the possibility in the next time around of doing that? Labels being important.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Directors of the Board. So the general public may be familiar with the terms English language learners, so you'll see ELL. You may see ELs for English learners. For state reporting, it's LEP, limited English proficiency. We in 191 want to acknowledge the assets that our language learners bring in that they're multilingual. However, for the funding associated, if you're identified as qualifying for the services, multilingual students could also include a student who is proficient in any language, Russian, but they wouldn't qualify for funding, and so that's why we have to, for additional funding. So that's why we have to report it out that way, but we do acknowledge that our language learners have assets.
Okay.
So it's just so how do we navigate the facility of those terms, and I think we can all help with that.
Right.
Okay.
And I guess on that point, would you mind just going back to one more slide that, any one of the early ones that had ethnicity on it?
Ethnicity?
Yes.
This one?
That's fine, yes. And this is just a comment, again, for, just in general, we say this every year, it would be nice if we had a little bit wider range of, I know, again, the options available are presented to us by the state and the necessity around funding and reporting, but it would be significantly important to understand, a little better breakout of some of these dynamics, but that's for anyone that happens to be listening.
So Chair Miller, Lisa, do we expect changes to this with the new system?
Yeah, so the Mars.
FII or edfi, I'm still trying to get used to it. Fi-fi-fo-fa, or what is it? Edfi?
It is edfi.
Edfi.
E-D-F-I. And so that program is going to be replacing our Mars system, which is what we have been utilizing for many, many years. In an attempt to get to your point, Chair Miller, with regard to the breakdown even further, there are various additional categories that families may choose. The challenge for every district is, it's not a problem so much when people come to us newly enrolling, it's how do you reach out and get that information shifted for those families that choose to, for those who are already currently enrolled? So that's our, that's our challenge right now, is just finding that opportunity to help people understand it, what the rationale and reason is behind it, and then to get that data shifted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director Ryder, for the presentation, and thanks from the board to the man-hours that went in, the people-hours that went in behind this on the backend. We do appreciate that very much, thank you. All right, we will move to receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH, respectively. Speaking on the matter, Dr. Teresa Battle, our superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Directors of the Board. Give me a moment to pull up my notes here because I have some very important information regarding an announcement this week. So first, tonight I will share information regarding the latest announcement of vaccination or weekly testing for all employees with 100 or more employees. And then Bernie Bean, our lead licensed nurse, will provide a county health update and 191 COVID-19 case information and details about our participation in Minnesota's vaccination program and screening and testing program. Lastly, Brian Gersich, Assistant Superintendent, will give an update regarding activities and athletics. So first, the announcement. The Federal Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, announcement that OSHA will publish a COVID-19 vaccination and testing emergency temporary standard, or ETS. The ETS requires all employers with 100 or more employees to ensure their workforce is fully vaccinated or require those who remain unvaccinated to produce a negative test result on at least a weekly basis. Minnesota Department of Education will provide more information as they learn more from the Department of Labor and Industry about Minnesota's implementation of ETS. So the Minnesota OSHA department will review this ETS, emergency temporary standard. They will come up with Minnesota's plan, and through the Department of Industry, they will announce it, and then MDE will help facilitation of that conversation with districts regarding our implementation. So at this time, we do not have any more additional information, but we will keep, of course, our employees updated as well as the board. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bernie Bean.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, Chair Miller, Board of Directors. Good evening. So I would like to just start with some updates on our numbers. Our state and our community continues to have a high transmission rate, and we're, and the state and our community is seeing a recent surge in cases. Over the past weekend, COVID-19 case growth for Minnesota exceeded the intake capacity, which resulted in a temporary backlog for them. Therefore, new case counts that are published every day will be underreported for the next few days. In the last 24 hours, Minnesota has had one of the highest rates, 5,123 reported positive cases and 39 deaths, and being mindful that that is probably underrated. For Monday, for schools and childcare, for completions of red cap, they had a high number also of 1,500 reports for schools and childcare, and a couple weeks ago, the average was about 1,000 for red cap. The seven-day case rate for Dakota County currently is 325. Last week, it was 263, which is a 23% increase, and during the last board meeting, it was 216. Out of those cases, 19% of the new cases were in children under 12 years of age, and in comparison, at this time last year, it was 7%. This past week, Dakota County has experienced 20 deaths due to COVID. Scott County has also seen an increase in numbers. Currently, it's 389, and the last board meeting, it was 221. Their largest population affected with the cases are the children under 12 years of age. In terms of positivity rates, those numbers will come out tomorrow, but the last week they have been in the seventh, seventh of the low 8% range. So as far as our district, as of November 6, we have been informed of 32 positive cases among staff. 26 of those resulted in a case investigation due to being positive, being infectious in our building during that time. The week prior to that, we had 26 cases that were reported to us. For students, we have been informed of 150 positive cases, with 106 of those requiring a case investigation. Last week, the total positive cases was 127. As far as investigations that we've completed last week, the number was 21, and so far this week, the number is 17. At the end of last week, we had 195 students that were out due to the effects of COVID. Now, those numbers are concerning, but I'm also here to tell you that our district is doing a good job. We are working hard to be diligent to the mitigation strategies, learning from our cases and how we can improve our strategies, and talking with MDH and regional support. Our numbers are still in a good area. So we need to be thankful and thank the community and the students and staff because it is hard work. It is tough, and, but we have to continue to do this, and we're doing the right thing, and it is impacting positively what we need for our community. Okay, on to other things. Saliva screening. So for the staff, we have scheduled two dates for saliva screening through our leftover Vault kits, and those are scheduled for November 17 and December 1. We do really encourage the community, staff, parents, to order your free kit through Vault. It's a partnership with Minnesota Department of Health. You order it for everyone in your family, it comes to your home, you send it in, and another one will be sent to you, and it's a free program. For our students, we continue to have this amazing partnership with Dakota Child and Family Clinic. They have seen, since they started the program with us, 120 students, and that's up from 72 weeks ago. The average daily testing that they do for our district is four to five a day. However, they have said in the past, this week, they have seen up to 10 students a day. The positivity rate for the test that they're doing is at 5%, and whenever we get 5% or over, that means there's some community spread happening. Okay, and I just wanted to touch on a little bit on antigen and molecular because the last board meeting, there was a question about that. So antigen sometimes gets called rapid test, and that's looking for protein fragments of COVID. Then where the molecular, which sometime is also coined as a PCR test, that's actually looking for the genetic material of a COVID. And that one, they can actually detect the DNA before somebody has symptoms. The PCR molecular test is still considered the gold star test. Okay. Okay, so on to vaccination. This is our little glimmer of hope. Well, it's a big, big glimmer of hope. So as you know, November 3, the Food and Drug Administration approved Pfizer as an emergency use vaccination for five-to-11-year-olds. It's a two-dose series, three weeks apart like it is for an adult, but it is a smaller dose. We have been approached by both Scott County and MDH Dakota County to be a host site for an immunization clinic. And I do want to really take note that participation in this optional clinic is only by parent/guardian permission, and the parent and guardian do need to be present with the student to receive this vaccination. Our first clinic is next week for Eagle Ridge, 3:30 to 6:30, and the second dose will be December 16. We open the link this week, and out of the 300 slots, 262 have already been reserved by our community. So we met this week with MDH and Dakota County, and they use an organization called the Homeland Health Specialists to talk about the clinic at the Burnsville High School. And that has been set for November 29 as the first date, and the return dose, December 20. They have room for 360 slots. We hope to get that registration link out to families by next week to get them signed up for that program. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Directors of the Board, and Superintendent Battle. Just a brief update on athletics and activities, just so that you realize these are just things that continue to be discussed and we're looking at, and it seems like good timing, especially as we now are transitioning and closing out our fall sports and moving in to our winter sports as well. And I think just the general reminders that we do look at all of our sports on that case-by-case basis, and we do expect that they have plans in place to mitigate the impact of COVID-19. We understand that these sports and activities are really important to our kids, and it's a really important part of who they are, their identities and their passions that they bring to school. And so we want to offer these things everywhere we can, but we're going to continue to find ways to mitigate that risk. So that will continue to include things like the expectation that participants are masked when not actively engaging in the sport or activity. So a basketball player who's not in the game would be expected to wear a mask. Those are kind of just some of the general understandings. We also understand, too, that there is some risk that comes with these sports and activities that is a choice of families to be a part of it. And I know this board has asked before about things like wrestling and the fact that that is a very close-contact sport. And yes, our plan is to engage and allow our students that opportunity to participate, but again, we're going to continue to talk about what can we do to make those safety, as safe as possible, again. Masking while not participating in the event, how do we treat our locker rooms and ensure that those are distanced? Certainly, there is a need for, a wrestler is the example, to shower afterwards because those familiar with wrestling, there are also skin conditions that need to be a part of that, too. It is important for the athletes to shower afterwards. There are other sports where that's not as necessary, and certainly, an example of something like an alpine ski, very different level of risk than we're talking about than some of our indoor sports. So just so that you realize, those are out there, and we also understand we're talking about a population of our students that has an opportunity to be vaccinated as well, another layer of protection that they, as an individual and as a family, can decide as they engage in some of these activities. The other thing that winter sometimes brings forward that is common to some of our winter sports are tournaments, and just want to talk through that a little bit because going to a tournament, particularly when it is a potential overnight stay, is an additional set of exposures and risk in close contacts. And it's another situation where we want to see these opportunities for our kids, we want them to participate. We want them to participate, but we've talked through additional mitigations and things that we need to do. And this was something that was discussed at Superintendent Battle's COVID Advisory Group, I believe, at the last meeting, where we talked through, and there was support and consensus from that team to allow this, but understanding that we would adhere to some additional expectations. So that would include some cohorting of students, so that we're keeping students that are otherwise close contacts together more frequently. So if they're going to be in rooming together, with the example of an overnight stay that's coming up soon with our girls' hockey program, you look at it and say, can you cohort them by lines? A line is a set of players that are on the ice together, but when they're not on the ice together, they're lined up in the bench together. So they're almost already considering themselves as close contacts, so let's cluster that so that they're on the bus together and wearing masks on the bus, because that is an expectation of masking, but they would also potentially be rooming together. Or if there are siblings or other ways to try to make sure we pod this out and limit what a close contact looks like. So those are just some of the additional things, as well as we are going to have the expectation that our participants that are going in these overnight stays have a negative COVID test prior to doing it. And to make sure that that is accessible to all of our students, we are planning to administer that as a part of a team effort. We will, our plan right now is to do that two days before the trip with a rapid test, administered by our team, our health officials, of course, as a health process. Communication for that, as well as procedures, are all being finalized and will be sent out in the very near future. Certainly, the coach of that particular activity has been a part of that conversation as well. These are things that we would like to see as routine expectations for moving forward, for that consistency. Certainly, if we learn things from this event that we can make ourselves better and make our participants safer moving forward, we would do that, but we also want to have some consistency. And so this idea of having a negative test before we put people together on a bus for these adventures does seem like it has a lot of validity to making sure that we're, you know, sending kids forward as safe and as healthy as we possibly can. And just, you know, kind of on the heels of Bernie's comments about watching and monitoring the results, this team continues to meet every week, and we will continue on a case-by-case basis. If we see breakouts or unsafe measures, we're going to have to adjust, or we're going to have to talk about, can we continue to do that? And that's not what we want, but that's the reality of what we deal with. And that concludes my section.
That concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I will open it up for questions or comments.
I do have two questions, one for Bernie and one for Brian. Bernie, I was wondering, you mentioned the recent deaths in regard, that we've been getting, and remind me, did you say statewide, or is that like clustered in certain counties and districts?
The one data I gave was 29. That was for Minnesota today. And then the other number of 20, that was for Dakota County last week.
And what are the age ranges, do you know, in that, in those numbers?
I do not know that. I do know for Dakota County, the average age for hospitalization has been 40 and up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So Brian, I'm really glad to hear about the, you know, the traveling and that's happening for many of our sports, especially the winter sports. What are some of the mitigation that's happening within, you know, other teams that they're playing, right? Other districts that might not be masked? What is the communication that's happening between that specific school district or that specific team and your team?
Yeah, really good question. So the answer is, I don't know what for the tournaments or other kinds of things, but from an actual athletic participant's perspective and through the conference, it really is the expectation that participants adhere to the rules of the home site and the host. And as we all know, if we monitor the news and, you know, what we hear, just even anecdotally from our neighbors, we're not all aligned in that area. So it is a way of saying, I think we are safe to default the fact that we might be against participants that are not adhering to the same kind of, in fact, I can almost guarantee, they're not being as conservative and careful about and deliberate about the decision-making as we are, which is why we do just need to do everything we can to control what we can and the expectations of our participants, but that could vary greatly.
All right. Well, thank you and your team for doing all that.
Yep.
Yes.
Director Connor.
Excuse me. I thought during COVID that water fountains were not functional, and I'm just wondering why they're functional now.
Yeah. We've learned a lot about COVID, even though it's a very novel virus. We have learned a lot in our last 18 months, and the risk of contracting it from a water fountain is very minimal, and it's more of a risk for children not being hydrated, adults not being hydrated. Not to say that we still don't wipe things down and do our best with our cleaning procedures, but that was considered a very low risk for COVID.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Director Miller.
So I, you said that you were approached to have the vaccine clinic, and that, so far, that is what we have set up, the first shot and the second shot. So if, depending on the success of that one, do you foresee having another one, an opportunity to have another clinic after that one?
My conversations with MDH is that they would continue to look at that for our district if our, if there's a high demand. So that is always still a possibility.
And so Director, members of the board, we did survey our parents to get a sense of the testing. Is that correct? Was it employees?
Employees.
Okay.
That wanted to participate in the saliva screening.
So just a little bit about how we did give a number to the counties of what we expected?
We gave them a number of how many students we have in that age range. Yeah. And there's much more than 360 students.
Right.
Thank you, Chair Miller. Just a couple of questions, probably for both of you. Brian, starting with you, for the activities, are, I heard you say that our teams will abide by the rules, well, teams abide by the expectations of the home team. Given that we're a district that requires masks, what does that mean for our students?
Yeah, good question, actually. I don't have the answer to that. I'll have to go back and look at the plan, because a lot of the focus is on the expectations of our students at our sites, that I'm assuming the question is, if our basketball team goes to a site that doesn't require it, are our players still going to do that? And I'm going to have to bring that back because I actually have to look at the plan more carefully and see what that looks like.
Awesome.
A lot of this is a transition from fall, which was primarily outdoor sports, to winter, which is primarily indoor, so that's a unique question that I'll have to look into.
Awesome. Thank you. And when you do find out, if maybe Dr. Battle could let us know what the...
For sure. Yep.
And then, going back to a previous question, tracking attendance of the audience for community spread, are we doing that? You know, I mean, people will be attending basketball games. Are we going to know who those people are?
You know, at this point, no, there isn't a plan in place to do that. I believe that is a part of the fall process is, you know, again, in the spring, we had the QR codes, we were collecting some of those things. That has not been in place so far through the fall and isn't currently on the plans, which doesn't mean if groups feel strongly that we need to implement something like that, that we do, but that is not a part of the current plan.
Okay. And so Bernie, turning to you, the infections that we're experiencing in our schools are the, is the research that we're doing, the testing that we're, the tracking that we're doing, is that determining that the spread, the contact is happening within the school or outside of the school, or a mix?
That's a part of our case investigations. We do look at if we can find a common thread, and by looking at attendance, and at this point, I would say, no, we're being impacted by community. You know, we're just not finding a strong enough link to say it's, there's some spread going on. And, you know, we, we, when we see a situation of concern, we may talk about having, making sure there's no illness in that area, be sure that we're diligent to symptom-free and promoting that with our families. So we try to do those, that also.
I guess I would just, I mean, I really would love for activities to continue for our students for the year, and if masking is what's going to get us there and mitigation as much as we can, you know, trying to let our kids be who they are and do what they want and follow their passions, as you both have pointed out, you know, that's, that's what I would hope for.
Yeah. Thank you.
Director Hume, did you have something?
I just had a clarification about the clinics. They are only for the five-to-11-year-olds, so like a middle school or a high schooler would just need to go to Walgreens or wherever, if they were still needing to get vaccinated.
Yep. Great question. It is only for the five-to-11-year-olds because the dosage is different for that age group, and that would be too much of a risk of an error, so they are only going to focus on the five-to-11-year-olds.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Then, knowing that the amount of doses that are allocated for the two distributions are not equal to the population of students we have, are we providing any other resources to families as to where they could get their child vaccinated if they can't get a slot?
Yeah, you know, the good thing is, we, the communities kind of did a pre-flight, knowing that, hoping that this would become an emergency use authorization vaccine. And so our pharmacies, our medical clinics are really ready and have executed a good plan to reach out to families to get vaccines and have it available, no different than we did with our staff. When we are aware of a clinic, an opportunity, we will push that out to our families.
Thanks.
Any other, yes, Director O.
I'm sorry, I missed one.
It's all right.
Dr. Battle, it was for you. So talking about OSHA's ETS, we're talking about it because we know it's, you know, it's a thing. There also was a stay, correct? So that kind of keeps us in limbo a little bit, no?
Yes. You're correct. So that's the other factor. And so I think we're just getting ready, and we'll let the courts have its process, and we'll see.
And we'll continue to do the pre-flight, pre-flight planning as we need to.
Yes.
Okay.
And as you know, we are very flexible, and we plan ahead, Plan A, B, and C. So we'll see.
Any more questions? I have a couple of things. Bernie, when you were talking about the clinics that we're hosting for the child vaccinations, you made a point that the children, the parents need to be present. These are after-hour, well, not after-hour, but later clinics, they're not during school hours or anything like that, right? So is that the parent being present somehow associated with that, or is that our intention going forward, pretty much no matter what type of clinic we deploy, the parent would need to be actually present?
For children, yes. For this age group, you know, to, for the emergency use authorization of this vaccine, parent/guardian have to sign off on it and be, you know, sign off on it, but I know that our counties are there requiring them to be present, the parent.
That's a county guideline. I'm only asking because I know this is something of a talking point, let's say, nationally-wise, and I just wanted to be clear communicating with our public, our standing on that, so we don't have to answer any additional questions about it.
Yeah. Definitely, parent/guardian need to register for the appointment for their child, and they need to be present or the vaccine will not be administered.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And Brian, for you, I'm just curious on the masking at events. So our practice is that our events hosted being the host, we would require a mask. Have we thought anything about, some of winter activities don't, we host them, but they don't take place at our facility? Of course, I think of hockey, but also, you know, alpine skiing, I think, I assume happens at Buck Hill, for instance, you know, et cetera. How do we handle that, or have you thought about that at all?
Oh, for sure. It's a question that's come up a number of times. The alpine ski is the example, is an outdoor event. So far, we don't have an indoor or an outdoor mask mandate, and so there really isn't that same kind of expectation. But with the hockey arena, that is something, we lease that space, and that has come up a number of times, and I've advised the group that we are hosting that event, and while we're hosting that event, we get to determine the health and safety rules of our event. So the fact that it's off of our property, it's still leased space by the district, it's our hosted event. If we get to a situation where maybe it's a section or some other entity hosts a tournament at that space that we happen to go to, the host is thereby, or in a section, it's the section that's hosting it, and they do get to determine those rules. I think, still think it comes back to Director Alt's question about what do our participants do at others' events, but when we're the host, we get to determine what the expectations are for our event.
Okay. All right. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we are going to move to our student representative, Zoe Olson, for the student representative report for this month. Zoe Olson, the microphone's yours.
Thank you, Chair Miller. The past few weeks of school have been filled with lots of academic work as the first quarter of the school year has neared its end. This Friday is the last day of the first quarter for Burnsville High School students, which means that this past week has been very busy. After several days off for MEA and conferences, students are back this week and have been wrapping up units by taking tests and quizzes, writing papers, and finishing up their unit assignments, which has created a fair amount of stress for many students. But one group of BHS students in particular has been working to help other students be academically successful at Burnsville High School. The BHS Writing Center has recently started up again for the school year. It's, being one of the first of its kind in Minnesota, the Writing Center is an after-school peer writing center where students can go to get their papers reviewed and improve their writing skills. Students who are writing essays for classes can request a peer coach, and then these peer coaches will meet with the student for about 30 minutes at a time to help them review, edit, and strengthen their essays. And although the peer coaches only meet with them for that short 30-minute time, they help, it's mainly younger students that they help to improve their writing and their confidence in their writing, but also it gives the, students have different grades, a chance to interact with each other, and older students can sometimes be a sort of mentor for some of the younger students. The Writing Center's peer coaches are all seniors who volunteer their time to meet up with their peers. Many of the students are very busy in many different activities, but they still take time out of their schedules to help these other students. The Writing Center just started up a couple of weeks ago reviewing again for the year, but prior to that, the peer coaches attended training sessions, taking time to prepare in order to make sure their peers have the best possible experience and make sure they can help their peers in the most, as much as they can. And in addition to helping their younger peers learn, they, the peer coaches themselves can learn, can get a lot out of that experience when, sorry, the peer coaches, they're all very excited to be taking, partaking in this Writing Center, and when attending the first training session, many of them discussed why they wanted to be peer coaches, and a lot of it was because of older students that they had worked with that were peer coaches. They wanted to be that person for other students that had helped them and helped other students as a result. And others said they just enjoyed writing and learning about writing, and many actually enjoy reviewing essays, which was a little bit surprising. The Writing Center is here is full of a lot of students who really care about the work that they're doing. And in this really busy week, it just, it's sort of a reminder of how students are helping support each other and can help reduce the stress of other students. And the Writing Center peer coaches are just one example of the strong community involvement that Burnsville High School students have been displaying recently. Aside from the Writing Center, some seniors were election judges, as you all know, for the election that occurred last week. Additionally, there are many different community service projects in the works at Burnsville High School. The Burnsville High School Blood Drive is going to be happening tomorrow, and there are already 90 students and staff signed up, so that's a really high number and really great. Burnsville Strong is going to be having a food drive the week before Thanksgiving, and National Honor Society is going to have a hygiene drive the week after Thanksgiving. So lots of different groups and students are trying to become involved in the community, and... and help others. And this is, that's just a snapshot of some of the community involvement that has been happening among students recently at high school. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Zoe? Yes, go ahead, Director Alt.
Thank you, Zoe. That was a great report. Every, of course, every high school has, has its, you know, its ups and its downs, but it's just so wonderful to hear about how our high school students are coming together and supporting each other, and the drives and the blood mobile, and it just, I really appreciate hearing about that. Is the Blaze store still open in the, in the, in the library?
Yes, the Blaze Nation Station, that, yes, it is. And actually, the hygiene drive that National Honor Society is doing is going to be for the Blaze Nation Station, so it's going to be a district-wide drive. So hopefully, we can get community members that maybe have connections through the elementary schools, middle schools to also participate, and then all of the items collected will go to the Blaze Nation Station in the high school.
Awesome, thank you.
Additional questions? Yes?
Thank you, Zoe, for that awesome report, and I piggyback on my friend here, the information and the good things that are happening in our school district, it's just great to hear, and you are the voice to kind of give that information to our community. So I really appreciate you reporting to us during our board meetings. As far as the Writing Center, what are the hours for that?
So it's not really, we don't have specific hours. It's more, at least this year in particular, and last year, students will request a peer, peer coach through a Google form online, and then the peer, if a peer coach is available, they will like take that student and they will connect with them, and then they can meet either in person after school at a time that will work for the student, or they can meet via Google meets.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, Zoe, that was an awesome report, and you really need to let your, your, your peers know that we really appreciate them taking their time to help the community and to help their fellow undergrad, understudents, the younger students. It just shows a lot of growth and maturity and just things we love to hear. That's really awesome. Let them know, we're so proud of them.
Additional questions? Comments? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Olson, thank you. Okay, we will now move, next part of our information component of our meeting tonight will be the superintendent's report. Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Chair Miller, and members of the board. Tonight, I want to talk about a national trend that's affecting District 191, just like it is for many school districts around us. And that trend is a labor shortage, especially in positions that involve personal interaction with others. Right now, we have 14 teaching or licensing positions such as dean or psychologist open, 13 educational assistants, and six food service positions that are open, as well as some vacancies in clerical, community education, and custodial. It is not unusual to have a few open positions all year round, but this is more than usual by quite a few. I wanted to share with the board that we have increased our efforts to attract applicants. Knowing that we likely have many parents for whom a part-time school day position might work well, we're especially reaching out to them. We're running ads on social media, which have garnered more than 130 clicks through the first week. Principals are including requests in their e-newsletter, and in fact, I had one principal tell me, a grandmother called, was interested, and we hired her for food service. We even have ads running on the city of Burnsville's billboards on 35W and Highway 77 throughout November. We are also increasing the daily pay for substitute teachers and educational assistants who work on Mondays and Fridays, as well as bonuses for substitute teachers for every 20 days of work as they work for the district. But one of the best ways to reach people is through word of mouth. So to board members, our staff, and to anyone watching right now, I encourage you to talk to your neighbors and family members about the possibility of working for 191. These are positions where you know you will have a meaningful and positive impact on children's lives and an organization where you will be valued. To learn more and to see what positions are available, please go online, www.isd191.org. And very briefly, I want to share that we'll have a new print communication coming to families' homes in a few weeks called Wayfinder. This will be a twice yearly magazine that will be less news and include more stories that highlight who we are as a district, our values, and our identity. Often, these stories will be told by letting our families get to know our staff and students, as you just heard from our student representative, your student representative Zoe, who truly embody the values of our district and represent our pathways model. The first edition will focus on turning your passion into purpose, and I hope you'll watch for it in December. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Any questions or comments from board members?
I just want to make a quick comment and say, being that I work in the employer benefits field, I've heard the, the reference to the great resignation more times than not this past week, and I feel that, we're feeling that too. So I applaud you for taking the measures to attract more, you know, employees to the district and thinking outside the box and, you know, getting more traction to our district because I think for our students and, you know, they deserve, you know, to be, you know, have the services and, I mean, I'm feeling the pain myself. I'm trying to get my daughter into pre-K care, and they don't have enough staff. So, you know, we're all impacted. And, you know, we, I think, you know, coming together and figuring out innovative ways to attract more employees is a wonderful way to hopefully attract people. So thank you for that report.
You're welcome.
Do all these positions have to have degrees?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
Okay. Well, thank you. Then we'll now move to the board member report section of our meeting this evening. I'll remind you that these are reports that are not for assigned board member functions, but other, other activities we may be involved in. So I will just open it up for anybody with a board member report.
What's that like for schools, when you visit a school?
You could, if you'd like to, yeah, if you visit one, that's fine, yes.
I can do a report.
Okay, go right ahead.
I will give a report on Niklet, Joseph Niklet Middle School, which was my assigned school. I met with Principal Angie Poole Tuesday of this week. She's been the principal there for four years. I also met with Assistant Principal Dr. Braylark. He's been there for two years. She told me about the staff, that they have 120 staff, 16 teachers were out, they have nine subs, and they still were short, I guess, 14 or so. So it's, it's like Dr. Battle said, it's really crucial. She said they have two deans, two social workers, two counselors, which I was very interested to know that, you know, they have that many. And then they had a school therapist that was serving 80 students, but that person retired, so now there's no therapist for those students. So that's kind of a big loss. And then they have four special ed classes. And, let's see, they have 800 students combined with, because, because of Metcalf combining with them, last year they only had 300-something. And then they have 45 new teachers, so that's good, but they need more. And, let's see, there was something else that I thought, oh, I thought it was very interesting. Their school was very clean, I was impressed with that. I was also impressed with their, oh, that they placed in state for their, they were champions in the chess club. And I was really impressed with their Project Lead the Way, and they were making a pool robot, they were building robots and drones, and the other new classes are their family consumer class, which is like a cooking class, which I was impressed with that, and their adult learning class they have also is new to their program.
Excellent, thank you. Any other board member reports this evening? Seeing none, that'll indicate, or that will be the end of our information part of our meeting tonight. Move to the business meeting part of our agenda, starting with our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. I'll ask if there is any item on our consent agenda this evening that a board member wishes to move to for separate consideration. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion on our consent agenda this evening. So moved. Moved by Director Hume, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Sweet. All those in favor to approve tonight's consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Although any not in favor indicate by saying nay. Hearing none, tonight's consent agenda passes unanimously. We will then move to new business for this evening with one item, adopt a resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district special election. On this matter, speaking will be Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. Welcome back, Ms. Ryder.
November 2nd was the election, and we are here tonight to, there's a resolution attached in the board packet discussing the canvassing of the election numbers. So I would like to just take a few highlights off that resolution before we read the recommendation. The resolution discusses the fact that there was an election on November 2nd, and in all respects duly and legally called and held, and as specified by the abstract and the return of votes cast, there was a total of 1,569 votes. This is for a position of a special election on the election of one school board member to serve the remainder of a four-year term that expires the first Monday in January of Next, a resolution discusses the, the fact that Su Said, having received the highest number of votes, is elected to the remainder of the four-year term described above, and begins, continues in our case here now. Clerk is also hereby directed to certify the results of the election to the county auditor of each county. And so with that, the recommendation before the board is that the Board of Education adopts a resolution, sorry, canvassing returns of votes of school district general election.
I will look for a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Webb, and a second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chastain this time. Any questions or comments on the, the motion in front of us?
I just have one question. On point two, it says a total of 1,569 votes, but when I add up the three categories, it's 1,564 votes.
Yep, hang on, let me look at the...
I assume those two numbers should match.
So there is 1,569 on the report for the abstract of votes cast. Let me just see, 1127 and 377. 1,569 is the number of votes cast. And yet, the breakdown are, as we have it written, so I am, I am not sure about that. Any suggestions, Jamie?
The votes cast is from Dakota County.
Okay.
So there could be like, where there might be an overvote or an undervote, or...
I was just curious, right.
You know, didn't vote.
Okay.
I haven't checked them.
It's fine. I, I was just curious, the two didn't match.
The totals for each of the candidates are spot on, because I checked them and...
I'm sure they are.
And sometimes they're cast, sometimes they're cast and not accepted because of some kind of irregularity, yeah.
Hanging chads or whatever, whatever the Dakota County version is.
Yep.
Additional questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, I will take a vote on the motion in front of us. All those in favor for the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor indicate by saying nay. Hearing none, the motion passes anonymously. That concludes the section of new business for tonight and our regularly scheduled agenda. Therefore, we will adjourn to a workshop. I will call us an adjournment. And we will now move immediately to a workshop about Full Year 21 Audit Report. Speaking tonight will be Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. And guests, I assume. I will just go in order. I'll let Erin get the first one. Yes, Ms. Olson, you're more than welcome to retire. In fact, encouraged to do so.
You're more than welcome to do so.
Nothing, nothing, no offense to our esteemed guests.
Makes it more awkward.
Yeah.
If Ms. Olson was intending to continue in her education in the field of accounting, I would suggest she stick around, but... Okay, go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with you this evening the results of our fiscal year 2021 financial audit. And I believe all of you have received the hard copies before you this evening, as well as the electronic copies that were included in the board packet. Tonight, to speak on behalf of the audit firm, Clifton Larson Allen, is Dennis Hugavine, as well as Lucas Chase. And so they will present some information for you now at this time. I'll turn that over.
Thank you so much for having us. If I would have been on the ball, I should have, once I confirmed that Lucas was going to be able to join me tonight, I should have added him to the, to the slide deck, so I apologize for that. Lucas Chase has been on the audit for a number of years, but I don't believe you've ever had the pleasure to join us here, have you? Lucas is a director with our firm, but he, he's actually been the person who's worked most closely with your audit team here, your finance team at the district. I've always had the pleasure of coming and meeting with you as a board, but I haven't done the heavy lifting, you know, of course, that's been by Lucas, so, so tonight you get to put the face who's done the heavy lifting with, with the actual audit results. So I've asked him to cover the actual, first two slides on the slide deck with the actual audit results. But I first always like to start by thanking the people who do the, the heavy work of the audit itself. So, you know, in terms of Tyler, one of the things, I don't know if you were aware that we actually worked with Tyler before he joined the district, so I don't know if you were aware of that or not, but he, we actually worked with him in, in his different work capacities. So we had very high hopes when Lisa was very fortunate, she called me and said that she had hired her, him, and, you know, I had to congratulate her and said, how on earth do you keep coming up with this, pulling the rabbit out of the hat? Because, you know, it's such a skill set, unique skill set, to find someone with school finance experience. So very fortunate because, and in terms of transitioning, you know, for auditors, you get really nervous when you lose a key position, so we always get pretty nervous, as you can imagine, as far as, is this going to be a disaster and things like that? So we were very excited to find someone that we had worked with very successfully, so we were very pleasantly surprised how smooth, from our point of view, I could... So we were very pleasantly surprised how smooth, from our point of view, I can't speak for their point of view as far as how they felt. But from our point of view, and we talked about this at the exit meeting, so I'm not saying anything that we haven't already talked about, but we are very pleased with how smooth that process went, um, which isn't always the case, frankly, in terms of having that, that much of a turnover. So we were very pleased with how smooth the process went. So we very, very much appreciate all the work that went into this audit this year and, um, how that, how well that went. So we always appreciate how much Lisa puts into that effort, but also Tyler and certainly, um, Superintendent Battle and, you know, the interviews and anybody on the board that was interviewed as part of that. You know, we couldn't do our work without your involvement, so we very much appreciate that. So with that, um, since we're now transitioned to a workshop session, to the extent you'd like this to be a little bit more interactive and more conversational, we're perfectly fine with that. If you want to interject as we go along versus more formal of a board, you know, normal board meeting, if you want to do it that way, we're perfectly fine with that. So with that, let Lucas kind of, I'll see if I can figure out, there we go.
Thanks, Dennis.
I forget to transition. You just kind of give me a little elbow there.
So, um, this is, you know, so slide two in the slide deck here, audit results. Uh, I don't know if you guys have hard copies or PDF of the actual financial statements, but on page 10 is kind of the first bullet point here. That's our audit opinion, actually on your financial statements, where we determine if they're, you know, fairly presented, materially fairly presented. And of course, we provided a cleaner, unmodified audit opinion. That may not sound very glamorous, but it's the best opinion we can provide, so that's, that's a good thing. Uh, next, uh, then you kind of have the scheduled federal awards expended and, and the other compliance letters. There's another packet for that. Um, in there, on page one is actually, we call it our yellow book letter or internal control letter. In there, we provided opinion on, on controls and some compliance. We don't actually provide opinion on the effectiveness of controls, but we look at the design of controls over the significant audit areas. And if we notice any issues there, we would, uh, provide a, a finding on those. And we did have one, um, material weakness this year for controls over meals claims. And most of that was just caused by all the changes in, in operations due to the pandemic that, um, caused some underclaims. There's one month that is February that, uh, working with MDE, they're allowed to claim, uh, later there after the normal 60-day deadline. We do also look at some compliance areas with contracts, regulations, things like that. That's probably the yellow book audit. And there's no issues reported in that area. Any questions there? Otherwise, we'll go on to the next slide. Looks like Dennis already did. Uh, the single audit, of course, since you have more than $750,000 in federal expenditures, we do a single audit. Uh, through some risk assessments, we determine which programs are audited. You had, uh, two very sizable new programs with the coronavirus relief fund and then the education stabilization fund or Esser and Gear, as you maybe have been talking about throughout the year. Made up a large part of your CFIN, you'd see that, that's a big part of the increase in your federal, uh, operating grants and expenditures this year. And then, of course, on rotation, we, we audit your, your special ed program. If there's findings, we have to audit more than often than not, but otherwise every third year because it's a type A program. And we got through all that testing. There's a lot of testing, uh, with your staff and there's no findings, so that's very commendable. Finally, on page eight of kind of that control and compliance letter packet, we do, uh, Minnesota, uh, legal compliance audits. It's based off from the Office of State Auditors Minnesota Legal Compliance Guide. Uh, a lot of testing involved in that as well. There's seven compliance areas. If you print that out from the Office of State Auditors website, 65 pages long. And, uh, went through that testing and very commendable, again, no findings there. So that's kind of the audit results so far. If there's no questions there, I know Dennis has a lot of financial results for you.
And, and, uh, you know, that, those, that's getting to be harder and harder to get those results on a single audit and a legal compliance audit. It's getting to be very rare to not have findings with those programs, just because there's so many ways that you could have findings through no fault of the business offices, just get those problems, those programs are getting so complicated and the, the amount of detailed rules and regulations that your business offices are required to follow and all the different departments that get involved in these programs nowadays. So it really is meaningful to get, you know, for the single audit and for legal compliance to have no findings. It's really commendable because those results do not just happen. It's people paying attention and, um, and it's really commendable, like I said. So if we get into the financial results, then the next slide is a highly abbreviated version of the executive audit summary that's got a full-page summary of the whole general fund. But if we boil it down to the aggregated pieces, you know, we always want to bring the board member's attention to that unassigned fund balance of the general fund. And so that top line there, the unassigned fund balance started the year at $10,276,000 and then the end of the year with the unassigned category of fund balance at $13,187,000. Auditors like to express the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of the expenditures for the year. So you started the year, the $10,276 represented about 8.07% of expenditures and the, the $13,187 represented about 10.51%. So very commendable job there in terms of, uh, returning the, the district to, to financial health. You know, it represents some really important decision-making of the board. And you, you've heard me say this, that the, it's a hallmark of this, this board that you've been willing to take those tough, tough decisions in a declining enrollment situation. And, um, this results reflect that you've made the tough, tough decisions and you're getting the results that are important to maintain that stability, um, given the, the cards that you're dealt, you know, things like that. So the non-spendable category just represents the fact that you've invested fund balance in a, in prepaid. So that, that money's already being expended for prepaid amounts. And then the committed portion of fund balance is just for program carryover amounts. Is what that represents, um, in the, the three different balances, but the underlying details in the executive audit summary. But, um, the restricted fund balance, there, there's multiple ways the legislature likes to attach restrictions. When they give you a dollar, they like to tell you how to spend it in different categories. The, the details are all included in the executive audit summary. But the three biggest pieces were operating capital, the area learning center, and then the, the capital projects. Let me make up the biggest pieces of that category. But gifted and talented is in there and things like that. So if you want to look at the underlying detail, those are included in the executive audit summary. Then there's a new category that we've broken out here that you've chosen to take action as a board for the assigned fund balance category. And that's just a, um, category where you are choosing to, uh, use deficit fund balance to fund your budget for fiscal '22. So that's that $5 million there. So looking at the bottom line there, um, your, uh, total revenues for the year came in at $134 million. The total board approved budget for the year was at $133,700,000. So the net difference between the budget and the actual amounts per the audit was a $902,000 difference or a 0.67%. Very insignificant difference on, you know, what's close to $135 million in revenues. On the expenditure side, um, your total board approved budget was at $132,500,000. The actual came in at $125 million for a net variance of about $7 million. If we looked, and we have a slide later here, but that'll break that down. But, um, $2 million, something of that was, uh, for capital, which, you know, anytime you have a significant variance that's capital related, that's strictly timing as far as what capital projects didn't get accomplished by June 30th. So if you backed out of the 5.38% variance that's on expenditure side, if you back out the capital portion of that, um, your variance is down to about 3.8%. So in a COVID environment, this is very consistent with what we're seeing with other districts because in your particular case, you had the significant variance on transportation, for example. If you look, um, in the MDNA section at the front of the financial statements, Lisa's done a great job of detailing out some of the areas where there were significant, uh, variances due specifically to COVID-19. I think transportation was one of those areas. Substitute costs were significantly, significantly lower than what had been budgeted and things like that. But I think it's page 22, I want to think, in, in the front of the financial statements. She always does a good job of writing down, um, good details there. And so, um, that covers the general fund. If we look at the other funds on the next, um, page, the food service program did, did really good. The only thing that I noticed, um, is that there was a good amount of rightsizing of the program just because, you know, the federal government decided to pay for all the meals and, you know, through the summer, the, the food service, the, the summer food service program. So, uh, the revenues, the $169,000 that were in excess of the, the budgeted amount were, was all pretty much the federal funding, the 3.96% that was in excess of the budget. Was all pretty much due to the federal funding. And then the expenditures were higher than the budgeted amount, basically for the, the same reason. But what, what occurred to me was that for the food service program to have a positive outcome on the ending fund balances is just basically because you were able to right-size the, the outcome, you know, for the year. So that, any school district that was able to pivot fast because of COVID-19 was able to have that kind of an outcome. So that was good to see. In terms of the community's education program, um, had a significant amount of fund balance there. And I guess what we observed there was you had some federal funds come into the community education program. But what we're, what we're seeing is that school districts that were able to pivot, you weren't able to have the kind of programming that you traditionally had as a school district, but what you were able to do was offer to the kind of programming that the community needed, you know, in terms of child-related coverage or food service-related type of programming, things like that. And then you right-size the expenditure side of the equation. So, um, even though it may not have manifested itself on the budget side of things, that was very common with what we saw with other school districts as well. So you had a significant variance between the budget and actual side on the expenditure side. As the auditor, we didn't get overly concerned about that because that was what we saw with other districts as well. Because as far as a mid-year budget adjustment, you couldn't really have that much of a magic mirror, you know, magic ball to know exactly what would have been the outcome in a COVID environment, to know what that would have been. So as far as, what we cared most about is what the, the fact that you were able to right-size and match up the revenues and what kinds of programming you could sustain in a COVID environment and then match the costs with that. And obviously you were able to do that, but because you can see what the fund balance did. And then the other thing that was the unknown is you, you don't possibly know what the federal government's going to come through as far as funding in a COVID environment either. So again, very positive outcome on the community program, community education programming, so. Capital projects fund, I think, again, in a COVID-19 environment, you don't, you kind of put things on hold to kind of figure out what the needs are and you just kind of have to wait and see what, um, what the needs are. And I think that, that fun, that money will get spent down as you assess what the needs are. Total debt service program, I think you did a refunding bond both in and out for about $12.9 million or something. Again, I think I recall the savings to your taxpayers, just to make that a note of that was just over $2.2 million. So I just want to make a note of the fact that somebody was paying attention to the fact that you could save your taxpayers some significant money there. So that was good to see. And then the total in service, internal service funds is just your self-insurance funds, your severance and your OPEP funds that benefits employees. So everything, all in all, everything's looking really good in terms of your ending fund balances. So, um, very good reports there as far as the ending fund balances. As far as the next slide, just a five-year historical trend on the fund balances. So you can kind of see where, where we hit the low point and now we've had a couple of years of, of restoring health, financial health that, with the ending fund balance. So it just represents the tough decisions, everything that we've been talking about. And, um, again, not to be a broken record, but as you've made the tough decisions, you've right-sized, you, you still experiencing declining enrollment. I just sat through the enrollment report that you just talked about. But again, important to continue to make the, those decisions, and I know you will. It manifests itself in terms of maintaining fiscal health and these numbers are reflecting that. So it's just very positive. I don't think we really need to talk about, too much about enrollment because you sliced and diced enrollment in every different possible way that, that I've seen it presented. So I think you've got that very, very well covered. In terms of the, the five-year historical trends on, in revenue sources, what occurred to me is last year we spent time talking about the fact that that was the first time in five years that we didn't have to talk about all the games that the legislature plays, you know, in terms of, uh, those of you that have been on the school board, you know, were recollecting with me about tax shifts and aid prorations and different things that the legislature uses in their toolkit. This year, what struck me was just what a different situation would have been if the federal government hadn't come through, given your enrollment situation, what, how different it would have been without the funding on the federal source. You can see, uh, you know, the federal funding source, um, what an impact that had for the district. So I know that has consequences going out into the future, potentially.
Right.
For all indication, I think the money's going to keep flowing here for a bit, but, um, but it's something to keep our eye on, right? So...
Just to clarify, so most of that is, most of that, most of that delta is, is emergency funding and...
Yes.
Reactionary funding, right?
Exactly.
If you recall, there was the, um, coronavirus relief funds was around $2.7 million. And then there was the gear and Esser One funds that we also expended largely in that year.
Next slide is just breaking down the total expenditures of the general fund by object dimension. So this is where I was getting at the fact that of the variance on the total expenditures, 2.2 million of it was total, this timing difference is related to capital expenditures. So if we back that out of there, the total variance was really closer to 3.6 or whatever it's percent I said.
Just a quick question, um, Lisa, I think I remember seeing somewhere that, uh, in many reports ago that you gave, the capital expenditures are already underway, ongoing, if not complete, in terms of the, the capital fund.
Yeah, so this can get a little confusing for people because when you're looking at what Dennis is speaking about right now, this is the general fund capital. So what this is in the, uh, what the state does to pull these numbers and what, what our auditors have done on the financial statements as we pull them all together, the capital expenditures are more around the object dimensions that are more like capital type expenditures. They're like the, um, technology purchases and, you know, larger type expenditures. This is not Division 191 money...
Got it.
At this screen, okay? This is general fund only.
And the other thing I wanted to take away from this slide is just to make note of the fact in terms of that whole theme about right-sizing, is if you look, compare to the 2020 column to the actual 2021 column, there was actually a reduction in total expenditures of $1,848,000. So I mean, there was a significant reduction in total expenditures. I just wanted to make sure that got pointed out. And then in terms of total meals served, um, it just really jumps out at you the fact that every meal that was served was provided by the federal or covered as a free meal through the summer, summer food service program, right? Um, and then expenditures per ADM, school boards often like to know how, how you're doing in terms of, um, the profiles. And so we have looked at this in past years as well. The apples-to-apples numbers, again, just to remind you, is the 2020 column as it relates to the seven county metro area and then enrollment over, over 4,000 students. But, um, the thing about the profiles report is, you know, the thing that you always have to keep in mind, I probably remind you this every year, is, um, the thing that makes it difficult to compare one district to another is, is never knowing the cards you're dealt, just like I mentioned earlier, in terms of, in terms of special needs percentages. I know you looked at that in terms of the report earlier or the ethnicities and things like that. Everything makes it so complicated, uh, transportation and things like that. So, um, I don't know that it is all that meaningful. But the other thing that's going to take a while for it to bear out, COVID obviously is going to distort everything because, um, in terms of having to, well, instructional support is, well, gonna really, 2021 really jumps out at you as far as going to be a very distorted line for, it's going to go through this blip that's... But you've done so many changes programmatically in terms of the, the learning thing... But you've done so many change programmatically in terms of the, the learning things that you've done with buildings and restructures and things like that. It's just going to be an interesting time for it to kind of stabilize and become comparable. So I don't know how, I don't, it's going to take a couple of years probably for it to become more meaningful.
Included in that category is our instructional technology support. So as we needed devices and things of that nature, that's where that landed as well. So that's also part of the significant increase that you're seeing.
And given that, that each district is making its own decisions based on its own unique composition, goes back, I, you know, it's helpful sometimes to compare ourselves to other districts. Most times, we're just unique enough from those that we're comparing ourselves to that we just kind of need to do our own thing and.
I agree.
And forge ahead.
So those are the things that, that we pulled out of the executive audit summary. So to the extent you have notes or anything like that that you'd like to pull out at this point to, to ask us about, but we certainly appreciate the opportunity to, to work with the district.
I'm just curious. I know you mentioned you've, you are kind of aware of what, what's happening in other districts and things like that. Any, what are, what would you say the health benefits cost, the, the numbers in that? If there was any change in because of COVID and how did that change depending on, I'm sorry, the district?
Health benefit costs? I'd say most are health, are self-insured, similar to you guys, and I think they've been pretty stable. I, I haven't seen anything run away.
I was just curious.
I'd say it's, I don't know that, I, I don't have anecdotal evidence as far as rates, but I think yours are pretty stable. I mean, for the most part, my, my, my feeling, my gut feel off the top of my head now answers is that the rates have been pretty stable just because of, you know, the self-insurance is, is working as it should to, to keep things on a pretty even keel. I don't recall anything, have your rates gone up?
So our, our stop loss is always going to be a concern for us in these recent years. That seems to be our challenge. But aside from that, the, the financials related to our self-insured health and dental have been fairly stable. They've stayed, we have a reserve to, to help us a little bit as we may need, but we've been pretty good at being able to kind of either keep it even or add to it.
All right.
That is information that's also in the larger book and I can point that out to you exactly where if you'd like.
You're fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
If I could add one last thing, otherwise, this will be my last meeting with the board. One of the reasons I wanted to bring Lucas along is just because as of December 31st, I will be retiring from public accounting. And so I just wanted to pass that along to you. And thank you for the opportunity I've had to, to meet with you and work with you over these years. It's just been my sincere pleasure to have worked with you very much. So I wanted to thank you for that opportunity and wish you all the best going forward.
Thank you for your service. Congratulations on retiring.
Thank you very much. Thank you all of you. Thank you for your time this evening and thank you for your coming out here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, it is 8:21. We have to at least officially say that we're.
Sue had 8:20. Oh, but I will make a point.